Okay. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time for us to get started and appreciate everybody for being here. We're continuing in the process of developing a record and we have some direct examination of a witness, but this public hearing is open for the discussion of Isaguah Island's retail, Isaguah Island's medical office administrative site development permit, and Isaguah Island's self-storage administrative site permit. And as we ended last night, we were in direct examination of Mr. Gary Young, and so, Ms. Carré, I would ask you to proceed.
Yeah, thank you.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, if I may, just as a housekeeping matter, I apologize to interrupt. There was an issue that arose, some of the discussion last night raised the question of, you know, whether the staff reports and all their attachments were marked in a particular and designated way as part of the record. I believe your, the commission's counsel addressed that. And I would like to address that at the beginning, just to make sure it's clear on the record. I have copies of all of the staff reports with their attachments that I'm certainly happy to offer into the record. I believe they're actually part of the record already because the copy that I have was circulated with the first agenda, and they have numbering on them, so I know that they've been referred to. But just to make it absolutely clear for the record, I would propose that I offer those staff reports together with all their attachments and designate them in a way that makes the most sense. You may have some ideas, your counsel may have some ideas on how best to do that. So I'd like to just address that, so the record's clear on that.
Yeah, and I'll just jump in here because I wanted to make sure that we had the, we, the commissioners haven't in fact been looking at the staff report from day one with all the attachments connected to it. I actually had a numbering system. I think there's just been some confusion with the shared OneDrive link that effectively omitted that. I think that's what's happened. So I actually brought copies for counsel to review, just, it's just a, it's a proposed numbering system, so that you guys can see how we keep it straight. It's got all of the documents titled and dated, so I'll give you each a copy of this and you can review it. I think that this should probably satisfy everyone's concerns, but again, it tracks to the original staff report that was submitted on night one of the proceeding that the commissioners have been reviewing. So I'll give you each a copy and then everyone can make sure everyone are okay with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So we're here again with Gary Young. Gary, if you could please just confirm again for us that you were sworn in last night and that you're still testifying under oath?
I am Gary Young, and I was sworn in last night and testifying under oath.
Thank you. Gary, we left off talking a little bit about your experience last night. One of the things that you had mentioned was that you worked in Canada for a while prior to coming to the United States and working here. Roughly when was that?
1978, in the fall is when we came from Calgary here to Seattle, to Bellevue.
And when you came to the United States and started working in the United States, what did you do to get up to speed with the laws here?
Well, I, we had two parcels of land projects that we were proceeding to develop in this area. One was actually in, we're the city of Sammamish is now, and the other in federal way. And in coming to this area, my responsibilities were to oversee that development. So one of the very first things I got involved with was just understanding entitlement, processing risk, and specifically really vesting to, I, we were a public company, I had to report to the board of directors, and I just needed to understand that each step of the way that we were taking was, was, was safe and secure for the company. So that was my first introduction to a topic that's still continuing.
In your years of experience, and how many years roughly of experience do you have?
That's roughly over 45 years now.
Have you ever dealt with a local jurisdiction or a city divesting you or taking away vested rights?
I've never heard of that word, actually, till this process that we've been in, and the answer is no. We've, I've never been in that experience.
Let's talk a little bit about development agreements, not necessarily the one that we're talking about here in particular, but just in general. Have you worked with development agreements other than the one in the Isaguah Highlands?
Yes, over the years, we've done many, many different types of projects that I encourage the use of a development agreement. And in the early days before development agreements really came to the forefront, they were called concomitant zoning agreements. And my first experience with that was in the city of Kirkland. And we were developing a property and rezoning a property that was right at the gateway to the city where the Shell gas station and the keg is on Lake Washington Boulevard, and it was very sensitive and the neighbors were concerned about what would happen. And it was a perfect opportunity to use that type of format, which has expanded now to a development agreement.
And in working with those different types of agreements over the years, did any of the cities or local jurisdictions that you were dealing with mention this concept of divesting under those agreements?
Never.
What are some of the benefits and reasons why a property owner or the city or community might enter into a development agreement? Why use them?
I think maybe just an outline would be that when a property has an opportunity for, for different types of uses, or it's high-profile, there are a number of disciplines involved. And so, first of all, we'll start with the residents in the area, the neighbors, people that are concerned about the property. You talk to the city itself in representing their planning and what they want to see accomplished. And then, from the developer's point of view, we have to be able to be sure our lenders who are lending us money to proceed with the development, that the project, if it's a larger one, that's going to take a long time, has a pathway through completion and a logical transparent process, so there's no concerns whatsoever that things may not go the way they should. It's, it's really certainty and, and providing the opportunity to be sure that the project will go ahead.
And you talked a minute there about lenders. Can you expand on that a little bit, and just kind of the, the property owner's side of why a development agreement and reliance on one might be important?
Well, the, all projects need financing, and all projects need to have sort of defined definitions. So if you're looking at a condominium development, for example, there, the real estate as it goes through the process and as the condominiums are built, all of the foundation for that land use runs through with the project to the ultimate owners of those condominiums. And so, it's very important that all of the basis for the, for the property and the land use and the zoning is in place. And so, development agreements just provide an opportunity to be sure that things happen the way they're intended, and also, just for attention to detail, it's a great opportunity to be able to implement special changes and steps that would not be in a zoning process because zoning is broad and would be very specific to the property. And from the lender's point of view, they just need to know that there will never be issues or concerns or anything that could happen that would affect the project because that's their security.
Let's talk a little bit about the, the history of this property. I'll represent for you, and actually, I think you were here. Were you here for most of Ms. Heim's testimony?
Yes, I was, just with the exception of an hour and a half on one date.
So I'll represent that we heard Ms. Tia, or Ms. Heim testify about how the property was acquired from Microsoft in 2013.
Yes.
And then transferred to IHIFC in 2014.
Yes.
Do you agree with that, with her kind of summary of the dates and the history?
Yes, she covered it well.
Okay. And at the September 26, 2018 Development Commission hearing, in this hearing, were you present for that one?
Yes, I was.
Do you recall Mr. Lell's statements, and I'll paraphrase, to the, to the extent that Shelter had 20 years plus to file its applications for development on this property? Did you hear that statement?
I did hear that. It made me feel older.
Is that, is that really true?
No.
When did IHIFC and/or Shelter, we'll again refer to them interchangeably, actually acquire this property?
So it was 2013 and then the transition in 2014. So it's just four years, five years now.
Let's, let's talk a little bit about what happened in those four or five years or so, since Shelter's owned the property. I'd like to introduce a new exhibit for the record, and this one, can we just double-check our numbering? I have 110 as the last of the S exhibit. Is that consistent to everyone else?
The commission has 110 as the last exhibit.
Okay, so it's the S 111. Thank you. Okay. So Gary, when you've had a chance to look at this document, can you, and I want you specifically to turn to the second page of it. Can you describe what the email on the second page dated July 2nd and at 8:00 a.m.? Kind of give us the, the background of who's on the email and what you were all discussing?
This is an email from Keith Niven to Derek Strate with a copy to myself and Bob Harrison, and it's regarding the Microsoft property. And it's kind of giving an overview of commentary, really coming from an initial meeting that we had with, with the city. Do you want me to add a little?
Well, I think for, for starters, let's, just for the record, remind us, who is Derek Strate on that email?
So Derek Strate on this email is my associate working with me, and at that time, we were Polygon.
And how about Bob Harrison? Who was that at that time?
I believe the correct title was City Manager, but he was the, I believe, manager of the city at that time.
And so, excuse me, if you look at that email, there's a couple, couple sentences that I want you to take a look at. First of all, if you can go to the second paragraph and then the last sentence, it starts with, "If this is..." Can you read that sentence for us?
"If this is the best proposal we can draft, I think the city will let the land sit and wait for commercial."
Will you give us a little bit of, of background on why Director Niven was making that statement, from your perspective?
From my perspective, we had met prior, and it was a very kind of unusual meeting for our experience. We had worked very hard to secure an agreement with Microsoft, which is a very challenging thing to do. And so, we had, we were very excited and we had this agreement. We were coming to the city to talk about the property, which for us was just an incredible location and opportunity for development. And in that first meeting, when we met, we essentially were asked to consider giving half of the property to the city, essentially donating it, and our sort of jaws dropped and, and we were there to listen, and it was our first meeting. And so, moving through that first meeting then, and moving to this, we started trying to look at ways to look at what the city was asking, and the concept was to, that the city was focused, and specifically, I think Keith was focused, on a university and providing a campus for a university.
So when Director Niven's saying that, "I think the city will let the land sit and wait for commercial," what did you understand that to mean?
That would be something somewhat disastrous to someone coming in. In all my experience of working in some 35 cities and all the different projects that I'd undertaken, and particularly, this property being so urban and essentially flat and, and, and ready for development, having a city official say, "Well, we'll just wait for commercial," when we had already done some preliminary market assessment and we knew that, that just straight commercial use would be extremely difficult to the scale of this property because of the sheer magnitude of the property. And so, we were trying to look at, at the options to be able to do a holistic development. So this was very disappointing.
If you look at the third paragraph in that email, there's, and I'm looking at the sentence kind of midway through that paragraph, it starts with, "The property should be..." Can you read that for us, please?
"The property should be an outright give, bracket, think donation, close bracket, with no clawback for Polygon."
What did you understand that to mean, Director Niven's statement that the property should be an outright give, think donation?
So now, we're looking at a situation, we're in feasibility with the property owning, about to purchase the property, and looking at the fact that Microsoft, they don't think has ever given anything away, so we're paying above-market value, in my opinion, just because it's such a difficult property. Well, the property itself is a very good property, but difficult to purchase, so Microsoft knew that they had a very, very strong asset. And so, then to come to the city and be essentially told, "Okay, let's just carve up a large portion of that property and donate it," was just, it's just not feasible.
Did you understand what Director Niven was saying there about an outright give, think donation? Was he being literal about that?
I think he absolutely meant that we needed to make a donation and give some of the property to the city, and that clearly was, was in the discussion, except our challenge was to figure out how we could take a few acres of land and possibly donate it to offset that by other gains for the property. But for the conversation to start at 30 acres and then to go and bounce around to a whole series of different acreage sizes, it was, it was really, really difficult.
I'd like to talk next about a meeting that happened a little bit after this July 2013 email in September. And I have some meeting minutes from that meeting that I'll distribute. This is not in the binder so far. It is something that has been produced, so. So in these, we're, we're not introducing as an exhibit, this is just to help refresh Gary's memory as he moves along here. But Gary, can you start for us by just explaining what these minutes are, so that we know what you're referencing if you need to, as you testify?
These, these minutes are reflecting a meeting that was held on September the 9th, in my memory now, I think it was 2:30 p.m. I'll talk a little slower, on, on September the 9th. And it was, it's very clear in my mind, because I keep just a time record of my meetings, meeting schedule. And that day, we, we were excited to share the news relative to our transition of our company to Shelter and selling a portion of our property, the property, the Microsoft property, having a part of that being retained by Polygon, and that Shelter would have 22 acres of property to proceed with. And so, the objective of that meeting was to do an overview of that situation.
Do you know who prepared these meeting minutes?
These minutes were prepared by Eric Evans.
Who is Eric Evans?
Eric Evans works with me, and he's an employee, at that time, he was with Polygon and, and worked in a development group, and, and now he's with Shelter, and he oversees our construction and development for many of our projects.
Did you review these notes at the time they were created?
Yes, I did.
And are these notes something that would be kept in the normal course of business by Shelter?
Yes.
You mentioned that this was a memorable meeting. Can we, let's start at the beginning, and you, you mentioned it a minute ago about kind of why you came in to talk to the city, but what was going on with the, the property in Polygon and Shelter at that time?
Excuse me. We, we were in the process of, had already defined, Polygon had its residential area in the property, and we had our remaining 22 acres. And we were in, in the point of, of meeting with Swedish and, and getting a better understanding of the opportunities for the property. And we had also, in the process, through the previous meetings that we had with the city, had come to the realization that the economic viability of gifting a portion of the land just would not work. And so, in this meeting, we expressed our concern that the campus idea would not be feasible, and also expressed our concern that we couldn't go ahead with that concept even with, with that basis, because we felt that would be disingenuous to the community to move ahead with a program that couldn't work financially or feasibly for us.
How did the city react to that news?
It was, of all my 35 years of meetings, probably one of the worst experiences I've had, and that was from the context that unfortunately Keith just lost it. I mean, he just got extremely upset. And I don't know what words you would want to describe when someone gets that upset, but blood pressure up, face just really upset, ready to just leave the meeting. And, and that was just very disappointing, because we were wanting to have the relationship and to move ahead in a good way.
How did Mayor Butler react in all of this?
I think he was a bit scared, and he just immediately stepped up and, and tried to mitigate the situation. It was, it was testy, so he essentially asked his staff to calm down.
So if you look at the last page of your meeting minutes for this meeting, on page five, did, did Mayor Butler indicate, you know, what the city, what he thought the city needed to do going forward?
No, I don't think that's, you know, his job maybe per se, but, but he just indicated that Shelter Holdings is not interested in pursuing the college and that the city needed to respect the, the decision of Shelter Holdings.
When, when you left this meeting, were you left with the impression that the city was going to respect that decision and work collaboratively with Shelter?
I felt very uncomfortable, because Keith essentially is the gatekeeper to the city in terms of planning, development, the person we have to interface with every day. And, and the mayor was, I think, trying to be polite in, in the mayor's role, but we don't work with the mayor. So after having this happen at this meeting, it put us in a very, very difficult position because we owned the property, and, and now we had to figure out how we were going to kind of mitigate and try to figure out a solution.
So following this meeting, after, after that incident, what happened over the course of the next year or so, so 2014 to 2015? Did you have more interactions with the city for a period of time?
Very limited. We, we felt really we needed to distance ourselves a little bit, at least for a period of months. And we started proceeding with our work, which was to look at all the, explore the options. It takes a great deal of energy and time to look at a 22-acre property and, and know that there's different opinions about that property, and to try to figure out what the viable solutions are for us to be able to proceed. So that's what we were doing. That's what we worked on for that next year.
You mentioned a, a need to distance yourself. Why was that?
Just because of just how badly that meeting had gone.
In terms of how badly that meeting had gone, what were your concerns coming out of it?
Well, just what would happen to us. I mean, would, would we, were we being penalized? Were we being put in a position where it didn't matter how long it took, but the only use that the city could envision for the property, which we didn't really know exactly what that was, but our understanding was, it was a use that would be basically a large user, like Microsoft coming back to provide a single-purpose use on the property. And yet, the entire market area for, the Seattle area had shifted already to a focus in downtown Seattle, and the major employment centers and all the development was occurring there. And there were no companies interested at all in coming to Isaguah for that kind of scale or that type of development. And so, the concern was that we suddenly had a property that we believed would be just a great opportunity to collaborate and work with the city, and now we had a property that was essentially hand-tied.
So you mentioned taking some time to go back and do the research. And we also heard Ms. Heim testify, I'll represent, that you had started, Shelter had started looking at a mixed-use project. Do you recall kind of roughly the timeframe of, of the mixed-use project and how that came to be?
Yes. The, as when Tia came on board, working for us in April of 2015, it was kind of in that period that we were doing research and we were looking at all of our options, and we had done, we have, we have access to many, many different companies, because over the years, we've been building and we have a lot of experience just internally. But we wanted to be very sensitive to the fact that the city, if we just walked in the door and said, "Well, this is the market and this is what we feel," they would just be suspicious. So we wanted to be very careful to align ourselves with well-respected consultants that typically were hired by public jurisdictions and cities as opposed to developers, so we'd have the highest possible level of credibility. So in that process, we asked our, identified one of them being Kinzer, and they, we asked them to do research in all the levels of use for this property, including retail, office, commercial, and, and give their uncanned, their candid assessment with, supported by all their research.
Did you hear Ms. Heim's testimony about the community outreach that occurred for this mixed-use proposal?
Yes. And we did a considerable amount of outreach, and I was very involved with that.
Given your involvement, can you describe for us kind of what that process looked like?
Yes. The initial steps to prepare for a process like that involved hundreds of thousands of dollars of pulling these consultant teams together. We had Hewitt, which was the park designer, outdoor space designer for Isaguah Highlands, very well-respected, a very busy company, taking projects that are in other cities, other countries. But we have a good relationship with them, and they, they got excited about helping to participate and work with us. And we had Weinstein, a very respected architect in Seattle, and he was busy, as you know, there's so much going on in this area at that time. And so, they got on board, and then it was a matter of, of working with the market information and working with the, the concept. And so, we progressed through that, and our objective in our first meeting was to be able to bring all the information we had to... to the residents of the community, and let them guide us with what they felt was really important and maybe what wasn't so important. And backing up just a step, we were doing that, because in the process of talking to the city, we had realized that we, Keith had essentially said, "You've got to go out and reach the community, and that's the step that you need to take." And that was at a point when we had had time, quite a few months later, later in 2015, to come and meet with him.
Did you hear Director Niven testify earlier in these hearings that the mixed-use proposal didn't get strong community support?
Yes.
Is that true?
No.
And why not?
The evolution of that process, so, April, what was it, May 4th, our first meeting, extremely well-attended. And then, we took all of the information. We had different groups all set up for feedback, for people interested in whatever it was, traffic, or whether it was parks, or the retail uses, or office, or whatever, all those teams. And we went away, and we came back and held a second meeting in July. And at that meeting, people got pretty excited about the opportunities, because we provided for incredible parks, amphitheater, all the things that were on the list, that people had written on boards that they wanted. We tried to incorporate the majority of those into our plan. And the most important part of this conversation, and for the community at that time, was that we did have a large residential component. And the reason we had that large residential component covers maybe three main points. One is we were providing 4,000 parking stalls, literally, under the substructure of that entire property of the 22-plus acres. And the cost of that is extremely high. And the offset to that cost was going to be providing senior housing, a whole variety of housing uses above that to help offset the cost of the parking. But in addition to that, we were kitty-cornered to the park-and-ride, and had already spent a number of years working with Metro. We had rebuilt the South Kirkland Park-and-Ride, and we were awarded that in a competition essentially, and had built the 500-stall garage. We had a very good relationship with Metro. They were very excited about continuing to expand and see more parking available in this area, and we were going to provide parking to help that situation as well. So, moving along, we went through all those steps with our plans, and the community, some people didn't like the idea of the amount of the residential, but people mostly recognized that you need some residential in the retail setting, because we had a lot of retail interspersed that the city, the community wanted. To sustain that in the evenings, we have to have more people. And so, it was a very good urban plan. Out of that process, we then broke into specific groups. We had a very transparent communication for everybody to communicate with us. And in August, end of July, August, we had four different special charrette groups with 20-plus people, people that were interested, no matter who. We didn't screen, or, you know, if anyone didn't want it, whoever wanted to come was invited. And we got very good input. And so, that just leaves me to the conclusion that it's exactly the case you see in Seattle right now, where we, our only solution is density to handle our housing solutions. And this is an urban, we look at Issaquah Highlands as a beautiful master-planned community, but this property that we have happens to be the urban portion of that community. And with already with an incredible hospital and future plans for that expansion, medical office, all of these uses make nothing but imminent sense. But to have no opportunity to provide housing when you have a situation of the need for closer employment opportunities, affordable housing, all those issues, it's just very unfortunate.
So, you mentioned in there that there would be, in this mixed-use development, there'd be parking stalls, senior housing, parks, and amphitheater. Going to the housing piece of it, when we're talking about housing units in this context of a mixed-use development, what do those look like? Are they single-family homes? Are they townhomes? Are they condos?
They would all be essentially, they would be above the main platform of the development, whatever that took on. It was extremely well-thought-out, but it would be different levels of types of housing. Could be above, if I can, if I'm correctly describing this, it would be mixed-use form of development that we see in many of our urban areas of the city, where the housing is above the retail and the different park areas.
And then, what other types of, if the mixed-use proposal had gone through, what other types of amenities would Shelter have been providing to the community there?
Well, we were, there was a conversation towards fitness, and swimming, and entertainment, place for kids to go. A lot of teenagers in the community, the residents, that really wanted to try to improve the opportunities for their kids to be able to stay within the community, and also to be in an environment where there's an interaction, where the parents and the friends are seeing the kids as opposed to kids just going off the grid and going into other parts of the city, leaving the hill. This was, this concept was embraced by a lot of people.
What happened to this proposal?
Sadly, when we got completed through that process, and then we had a meeting in the fall, essentially, we were told that the residential component was not acceptable, and so, that project couldn't possibly work without it. And we were told that we, if we wanted to proceed with this development, that we needed to focus on the live-work-play concept, and focus our property on the work component, which took us back to the commercial component, but then trying to figure out, well, what would that really look like? Because I think at that point, we had the 1.2 plus 6, so we had 1.8 million feet. Well, there's no way that, the scale of this is so difficult to talk about, because we were looking at numbers of city blocks. So, it's, most of the experience in this city is one project, one building, and it gets built. But here, we're carefully planning a very large-scale development that requires a huge amount of infrastructure. And it's a type of situation where, once you start, you want everything to work and to fit. So, we're forced then to really look at a situation of what I would call baby steps. We can't go with the scale that we could have gone with mixed use, so then we have to transition our uses and figure out the depths of the market. And that's what we started working on.
In your opinion, you mentioned this work focus that the city had for Shelter's property. What did you understand the city's vision of that work focus to look like?
It really, over and over again, I was really told that it needed to be something like a Microsoft or a large, single employer, which was totally foreign. I mean, we have to think, the plan of Issaquah Highlands was conceptualized in another era of time. I mean, the Amazon experience, all the things that are going on in today's world didn't even exist. And so, now, we've seen an evolution of the community, and in a beautiful evolution. It's an incredible neighborhood. And now, we're kind of looking, it's almost like in a dinosaur approach. We're saying, "Okay, well, we're just going to go back to a past era." And so, this was the difficulty, and this is what point-blank we were being told. So, it just gave more and more consternation as you trail through all this hearing process that you've been listening to, of, we continually were given or talked about different opportunities. But then, when we did the research, and we came with the factual information, then we just hit a brick wall, and it was, "Well, no, you just have to go back and do the original, no matter how long, you know, 20 years, whatever it takes." And that's just not appropriate in today's world.
What did the city tell Shelter to do after this, after they rejected this proposal? How did they say to go forward?
Well, the next step was to come up with a plan that incorporated different uses. And so, that's what we started to do.
Did the city make any reference to the development agreement and how that might play into that?
Yes. We had, over the time period, a series of different discussions relating to the development agreement, just because from our point of view, as we're working with retailers and companies that are interested in being part of our community, they look at 5-, 10-, 15-year horizons. Well, they knew that the development agreement that existed was coming to, had a timeline. So, we were all cognizant always to know that we needed to establish a new timeline so that we could attract, even if we were having the lucky card of a single user that showed up, they would want that. And so, in that process, our thinking and discussions were always around just extending the time for the development agreement, or having a development agreement similar to the hospital. But at no time ever did a question of vesting ever came up, because it was never, never a consideration.
And you say it was never a consideration. Never a consideration, why?
Well, because the project is vested, at the point of application, we had a development agreement. We assured over and over again that the development agreement, when it was revised, would be totally the same agreement. That was all part of our reaching out to the community and being with the community. They were very concerned that suddenly things could change, and suddenly, there could be a whole new type of development going on in the community that wouldn't even be close to what the vision of the community was. And we assured the community that our intention was always to carry forward with the spirit of the design guidelines and all the parts that make Issaquah Highlands so incredible.
So, you went back to, back to the drawing board. And we're here talking about a few of the SDP and ASTP applications. Are those applications, and the plat application that we've heard about, are those the product that came out of going back and reevaluating and developing something new?
Yes. We carefully went to the market and worked very hard to have, and we'd already been working for a long time. But we were working with what we felt was viable, and we were on this timeline and trying to get something started, because we'd already now owned this property for quite a few years.
Has Shelter had end users, so potential tenants or others like that, approach Shelter about the property?
On a regular basis. And just this month, there's, there are many people looking now, because this area is so focused, and the entire world is looking at Seattle because of the phenomenon of what's happening here. And so, we have, we have a lot of different opportunities. And the sad thing is, here we are in this process, this hearing alone. You know, it started in September, and we're just going to go into a process, and then I'll go into another process. Every single person that is interested in development, a retailer, whoever, all they want to know is, "Well, what is the timeline? What assurances can you give us? What competence can we have to proceed?" And at this point in time, when you have a developer in litigation with the city, people just step back and say, "Well, let us know when you fix the problem."
And just so that we're, so that it's clear for the record, because I used a kind of a term that we may be familiar with, but an end users. What are end users for a project like this? What does that look like?
So, it could be just your restaurants, or your health club, or whoever, the medical office facilities. There's a lot of change going on in the medical office community. And given, just, it's really a blessing to have Swedish Hospital here, and given the growth of the area, this is something that's very interesting for all of us. And as we all age, we care a lot more about this as well. So, there are great opportunities in this community to help address those needs as people are aging in the community, and also for our young people.
Let's turn to the Meeting Minutes book that we've been referencing. It's been entered as an exhibit now. Let me grab it for you. Oh, it's hiding over here. There you go. And if you could turn in there to the September 21st, 2016 meeting, please.
Yes. September the 21st, 2016, meeting attended by Keith Niven, Lucy Slowman, Patrick Mulaney, Gary Young, Eric Evans, sorry, and Tia Heim.
Okay. And you mentioned that you were present for most of Ms. Heim's testimony. Were you here for her testimony on January 15th of 2019?
Yes, I was.
And did you hear her testify about what went on in this meeting?
Yes.
Do you agree with her testimony?
Yes.
Let's talk about just a couple of points in here. If you could turn first to page two.
Okay.
And we'll look, one, two, three, four, five bullet points down. And if you could just read, actually, just read that whole paragraph for us, please.
Keith said that "all your mitigation will evaporate and disappear, because the city's new concurrency system has no relevance to vested trips." However, he acknowledged that the city can't make landowners pay again, something that the landowner has already paid for. So, there might be some number of trips vested in the overlay, but they may be directional only.
So, let's talk a little bit about the different parts of this. What did you understand it to mean when Keith, and actually, to start with, is this what Keith said? Do you recall him saying this?
Yes.
And what was your understanding of what he meant when he said that "all your mitigation will evaporate and disappear"?
Well, it was kind of a shock to us, because through the course of the many years that we'd already been working together, we were always assured that our mitigation, which essentially, when we bought the property, all of the infrastructure that was installed and planned for, for the future, were part of what we were buying. That's what we were paying for. And it even was more sensitive to us, because when we bought the property, we waived the conditions that Microsoft had in place to protect itself for traffic impacts caused by future development by Swedish. And we totally waived that, and if we had not bought the property, Swedish probably wouldn't exist in the purchase of their next piece, because Microsoft would never have agreed to allow the additional traffic and counts coming from that development. So, we waived those opportunities. Those are assets to us. Those are, that's what we have to work with, with the property. So, to suddenly now come and hear, "Oh, your mitigation will evaporate and disappear", that is probably the worst, that's millions of dollars of impact to us.
And he goes on here, and he says, "He acknowledged that the city can't make landowners pay again, something that the landowner has already paid for." What did you understand that to mean in light of his prior statement?
So, it's a complete contrast. So, now, it's sort of like, okay, now, maybe there's a little hope of consideration. So, in the process of working, the difficulty we've had is, we have these discussions, and there'd be a negative, and then there'd be, "Oh, well, maybe we can do this." And in that process of the years, what we wanted was just, let's define what we can do, let's establish the ground rules, and let's move ahead. But continually, back and forth, if you cells have now witnessed through this entire process, there's a continual back and forth.
Let's look at the next page, page three, please. Let's look at the next page, page three, please. Looking at the fifth bullet point down. And if you could look at the second sentence and just read for us, it starts with, in Keith's opinion, please.
In Keith's opinion, council is invested in the commercial designation for Shelter's property, and the council members are willing to let Shelter's property sit undeveloped to see that vision accomplished.
Do you remember Director Niven saying this?
Yes.
What did you understand him to mean by this?
Well, I think it's what I had expressed earlier, as we were going through the community meetings, and specifically, council member Stacy Goodman and Mary Lou Polly, they were not interested in seeing us proceed with residential in the community. And so, we were being told that we needed to stay with the commercial to succeed, which again, for the reasons I gave earlier, is extremely complicated. And for us, now, moving through a series of years of working with this, we were really feeling that we were being essentially, can't think of the word right off the hand, but just put in a very, very difficult position, kind of hand-tied and not being able to proceed. And it was, it seemed to be deliberate.
And I'm going to take you away from the notes for just a second, and take you back to what's now Exhibit S-111. You had read a section of this email, the July 2nd, 2013, at 8:00 a.m. email. And will you just read this, this sentence again, that begins with, if this is the best proposal we can draft?
If this is the best, if this is the best proposal we can draft, I think the city will let this land sit and wait for commercial. So, I guess, moving ahead in time to this part that I've just been referring to, it's like deja vu. It's like, we've gone on all this effort, we've spent a huge amount of money, gone through all these steps, and it's kind of like I'm back in square one. Huge impact to us, very, very difficult, and Keith was driving that process.
You could look just a couple bullet points down now, to the bullet point that starts with, on the same page, says staff does not and will not. Can you read that for us, please?
Staff does not and will not support Shelter's proposal for a mixed-use development, in part because Shelter refused the city's past overture to tie up Shelter's property for five years, while the city attempted to market it to an institutional user. Keith mentioned that Shelter made a different decision. The five-year period would have almost run out by now, and that staff might have looked more favorably on Shelter's proposal.
Do you remember Director Niven saying this?
Yes.
And I'm going to reference now the January 15th, 2019 transcript of our hearing. And I'm specifically looking at page 94, starting on line 23. And then, the part that we're going to talk about is going to run on to 95, lines one through eight. Can you read that for us, please?
Answer, yes, at this meeting, they told us, or Keith told us, that the staff does not and will not support our proposal for a mixed-use development. Then he went on to say that that was in part because Shelter had refused the city's past overture to tie up Shelter's property for five years, while the city attempted to market it to a college or university.
Is, were you here to hear that testimony?
Yes, I was.
And I'll represent that that was from Ms. Heim's testimony. Is that consistent with your recollection of this meeting?
Yes.
If you could continue on there, I think, where you left off.
And he, he sat there and looked at Gary, and he told him that if he had just made a different decision, the five-year period would be running, and the application would be treated differently. It was really a pretty shocking statement for me to hear.
So when Ms. Heim is saying he, who is that referring to in your understanding?
Keith Niven.
Do you recall him saying that?
Yes.
Were you also shocked by that statement?
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's just like, we had had such a difficult start, and then we'd gone through, really putting our best foot forward in so many ways, and had done everything we possibly could to now fall in line with the desire that the city had, and we're still finding ourselves facing potentially not being able to go ahead.
And I'm mindful of our time, we're getting pretty close to wrapping it up, so just letting you know, since we're almost an hour in or so.
Right, now, please, continue, please.
Thank you. So then, turning to the next page of these notes, page four. Let's look at the first bullet point there. And I'll just read this part for you. It says, Gary asked how Shelter can protect its current contractual rights. Keith responded that when the DA expires, Shelter will lose its contractual rights, and the council will zone Shelter's property. Keith said that at that point, Shelter would be at, in quotations, at the whim of the council. So with that first part, it says that you were asking about how Shelter could protect its contractual rights. What did, what did you mean by that at that time?
I think it's just our zoning, and, and understanding just mitigation, all of the, all of the pieces that we had.
And so with zoning, can you explain for us what, what that means in terms of what you as a developer are looking at, and what you're trying to figure out in terms of your contractual rights? Is that vesting, or is that something else?
No, it's not vesting at all. It's just being assured that as we move ahead, that the property will, from day one, it was, it was, we had always been assured that the original Isaguahailands Development Agreement would be upheld, and that we would be able to proceed with that development agreement, which was our intention, working with the city. And so, that is what we work under. I don't know what else I could say.
Look down at the, the third bullet point down the page. It's the one that starts with Patrick questioned. Will you read that one for us, please?
Patrick questioned what will happen to projects vested under the DA. Keith said that if a project is vested under the DA, it will remain vested for the term of the vesting permit.
And so, do you recall that exchange between Patrick and, representatives Patrick Mulaney and Keith, Director Niven?
Yes, I do.
Is this consistent with, with what you heard them say?
Yes.
What did you understand Director Niven to mean by that?
That's what we always assumed, that we were vested under the development agreement, and we remain vested for the term, based on the fact that we, if we make an application, and we vest under the rules and regulations at that time.
Let's turn now to the November 14th, 2016 notes, please. So, who was this meeting with on November 14th, 2016?
A meeting with Keith Niven, myself, Patrick, and Tia.
And if you go down to the, the fifth bullet point down, it's the one that starts with Keith went on to point out.
Yes.
Can you read that first sentence of that bullet point, please?
Keith went on to point out that with vesting available under current DA, there is no gap between DA and new zoning, and that the moratorium work plan indicates that the city will have lifted the moratorium before the end of the DA's.
Is this, are these notes, is this consistent with what you recall Director Niven telling you in this meeting?
Yes.
What did you understand it to mean by his statement that there's no gap between the DA and new zoning?
He's saying that, don't worry, just go ahead and proceed, and everything will be in place. But the meeting started, and part of our concern was, we were trying to pull together our tenants and our plan for the potential for office, and having shelved our whole mixed-use concept. But in working with whichever retail users we'd have, and office users, they wanted to know, well, what regulations would they be working on, which was our development agreement, which was coming to an end, which we either wanted to extend, or have a new one. And Keith is saying, well, don't worry, it just, it'll just carry forward, and the zoning will fall into place.
So don't, so you're saying, don't worry, just carry forward. Why was Keith saying, don't worry?
Essentially, he was always assuring us that we'd be able to develop in the future, based on the original Isaguahailands Development Agreement. And that was always the case, always the discussions.
And is that, does that have anything to do with the vesting, or is that for some other reason?
Well, the vesting is, is there. We never worried about that, but our concern was that we just wanted to be able to assure for future planning, because of the scale and the size. And now, we had to scale down, so we had the remaining portions to plan for, that we could represent what would be happening, based on existing zoning or the development agreement that would exist. So we needed certainty. We needed to be able to have that completed.
So leaving this meeting, you know, after Keith made this statement that, you know, with vesting available under the current DA, there is no gap between the DA and new zoning, were you relying on that statement? In terms of the vesting?
Well, I wasn't ever thinking about vesting, really.
Say that one more time for her.
I was not thinking about vesting.
And why weren't you thinking about vesting?
Because in 45 years of business, I've never, ever had a vesting issue with any jurisdiction or city. And so, my position was simply trying to establish the other components, which are the zoning and the other components, so that we would be able to represent to our lenders and everybody that we would do business with, that these were the, that this was, essentially, the development agreement was in place.
At this time, this was November of 2016, is this before the applications that we're all talking about here today? So, the, well, we're not talking about the preliminary plat necessarily in this hearing, but the preliminary plat that Shelter submitted, the ASDPs, the SDPs, is that before all of those were submitted and beginning to be processed?
I believe so, yeah.
Let's turn, and, actually, we have one more, one more thing I want to talk about with you about this meeting. If you can look down to near the bottom of the page, there's a hollow bullet point. It starts with Keith said that, on the first page there. What did the, what did Keith, Director Niven have to say about when a permit application would vest?
Which bullet are you? Keith said that the city attorney had determined that in Isaguah, the vesting date is pre-application date, not complete application, and then mentioned that he hasn't gotten around to writing that determination yet.
Is that consistent with what you recall Director Niven telling you?
Yes.
Is this the only time that Director Niven said that pre-application is the vesting date?
No.
Complete pre-application?
We had had that conversation numbers of different times.
I'm sorry, just to make sure it's really clear for the record.
Sorry, we had that conversation a number of different times.
Thanks, Gary. Let's turn finally to the March 21st, 2017 meeting in here. So you're going to flip a couple pages back.
I'm sorry, Jackie, could you repeat the date, please, again?
Oh, sure. March 21st, 2017. And let's look at the second bullet point there. But for starters, this is, the top of this reads, that it's the meeting, City of Isaguah Collaboration Meeting for our BSP and plat application, and then it has a list of attendees. Can you just review that for a moment, and confirm that you remember those folks being present?
Yes, I remember the meeting, and it was an important meeting for the proceeding forward with the plat.
If you look at that second bullet point there, it gives a description, and I'll just read it for you, so, to keep, keep things moving along. It says, city indicated that they would support a plat to create the lots, and that this would be the simplest path. Keith acknowledged that a plat would vest for five years, and then five year from the final plat date, and added that we could get vested for an additional three years by filing a site, site development plan after the final plat. Is that statement that I just read, is that consistent with your recollection of what Director Niven said in that meeting?
Yes, it is.
And if you go down to, it's the third from the bottom bullet point, and it begins with Keith and Lucy confirmed.
Yes.
And again, I'll read this one for you. It says, Keith and Lucy confirmed that the P plat would follow the process in the DA. And Keith added that if the DA is terminated while we are in process, that we are vested, with one caveat, if they get rid of the UV DC, he says that they have the right to substitute the DC for UV DC. Is that consistent with what you recall Director Niven and Ms. Sloman stating in that meeting?
Yes, it is.
Can you explain what you understood that to mean, their statements?
Well, it meant that we're, there could be a change in, in the process, leaving the local UV DC group, which we had gotten to know, to a group that was more city-wide. And so, that that would be the only change that we'd really have to be concerned about for processing future applications. Everything else would stay intact.
Let's flip to the, the second page of those notes. And I'm looking at six bullet points down the page. It's the, the line that starts with Lucy outlined. Will you please read just that bullet point for me, please?
Lucy outlined the plat process as follows, and said, should be six months start to finish.
Is that consistent with what you recall Ms. Sloman telling you in the meeting?
Yes.
Does that process take in six months?
We're still here, and so, much, much longer.
Coming full circle, back to something that we discussed in respect to the September 21st, 2016 meeting. You had mentioned that these, these statements made by Director Niven about the past proposal, and had Shelter made a different decision, that perhaps the city would be treating Shelter's proposal differently. Is that something that was expressed just once to you?
No, there were different times that, that conversation. One just strikes in the back of my mind, him referring to a pivot point as we were, you know, proceeding. So I was reminded, I think, several times.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
We've been going for just a little bit over an hour, and I think it might be, before we started our cross-examination, if we took a short 10-minute break.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just real quick, since we have members of the public here, it might be good to explain how we're running the meeting tonight, and when they would have an opportunity to provide comment. So, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we finished the testimony of Mr. Young, we're going to give the city an opportunity to cross-examine. of Mr. Young, we're going to give the city an opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Young, maybe a short rebuttal, and then, or redirect, and then there would be an opportunity for the public to comment. So once we finish with Mr. Young.
That's right, that's right. And we do appreciate your presence here. And sorry that we're having to belabor this a little bit, but it just will take some time. So I'd ask Mr. Lell to give us a best estimate of time.
I would estimate approximately a half hour to 40 minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we're probably looking at 45 minutes or so.
And for the record, the city does not have an objection if the commission would like to take public comment. We're happy to undergo our cross-examination of Mr. Young after the public testimony portion, if that's the...
Just soon get that over. So let's go ahead. So we'll take a 10-minute break, and then it'll be about 45 minutes for your comments. Thank you. So let's take a break.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back on the air, so it's time to resume our meeting. And Mr. Lill, I think it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Young.
Good evening.
I believe you testified under direct examination that you have been in attendance for all, or at least the vast majority of the proceedings of this hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, with the exception of one meeting when I came late, about an hour and 45 minutes late.
Just to confirm then, you were in attendance during the previous hearing installments when Mr. Niven testified? Is that correct?
Yes, I was.
Thank you. Are you an attorney?
No.
Have you received legal training in land use law?
I don't think so.
How did Shelter come again to own the Issaquah Highlands property that's at issue in this proceeding?
How did Shelter come to own it?
Yes. Could you describe the acquisition process? Who Shelter purchased it from? What the negotiation process for that acquisition involved?
Well, the initial purchase was by Polygon and in the entity that is described in the record. And then through the process of the sale of Polygon, a portion, larger portion of the land was retained by Polygon and the residual 22 acres which we're referring to here stayed with Shelter.
And the two relevant dates for those transactions, if I understood your testimony and the previous testimony of witnesses, was approximately 2013 and 2014? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Was Shelter aware of the 1996 Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement when it acquired the property?
Yes.
How did it become aware of that agreement?
Just, that was the agreement for the development of the community, so it was the first thing you look at.
Did you, did Shelter obtain a copy of that document by pulling a title report? Was it part of Shelter's due diligence? Do you recall specifically?
Well, I would just characterize it as part of due diligence.
But you were aware of it before the property was acquired?
Yes.
Were you also aware that the build-out period specified in the development agreement was scheduled to expire in 2017?
That was never clear to me at that point in time for sure.
When did you become aware of that fact?
I couldn't tell you offhand.
Before or during Shelter's acquisition of the property, did Shelter have any communications with the seller regarding mitigation that had previously been provided under the 1996 Development Agreement?
I'm not sure what you mean.
There was testimony, you may recall previously, about mitigation.
Yes.
And among other things, you had, I believe, justified or acknowledged Ms. Hines' meeting notes that Mr. Niven at one point had indicated that mitigation that had previously been provided under the development agreement would quote-unquote "evaporate." Do you recall that testimony?
Yes, I do.
So my question to you is, before or during Shelter's acquisition of the property...
Zach, we have a problem. We've started without the court reporter, it seems.
I guess no one noticed that. Oops.
Uh-oh.
I'm happy to begin my questioning. I'm only about three or four questions down the list, if that's amenable to the commission for purposes of the record.
Sure, yeah. So are you gonna restart?
If I could.
Okay, yeah.
If there's no objection, it seems like that would be the appropriate means of correcting the issue.
Are you feeling okay? Okay, okay. So probably the best solution is to just restart.
Okay.
I apologize for not paying attention.
No, no, that's okay. No objection.
Thank you for calling that to our attention.
Certainly.
Again, sorry for the redundancy.
Yes, that's okay.
Mr. Young, have you been in attendance for all of the proceedings of this hearing?
Yes, with the exception of an hour and 45 minutes for one meeting.
And have you listened to all the testimony of the other witnesses?
Yes, I have.
Including the testimony provided in the previous hearing installments by Mr. Niven?
Yes.
Are you an attorney?
No.
Have you received legal training in land use law?
Not that I'm aware of.
Could you describe the timeframe and the process by which Shelter came to own the Issaquah Highlands property at issue in these proceedings?
The timeframe, 2013 and 2014.
And who did Shelter acquire the property from?
The, from the Microsoft.
And that was in 2013 specifically?
Yes, it was under a different entity, well, the entity that's, excuse me, that's in the record.
And what again occurred in 2014?
In 2014, Polygon was purchased by the William Lyon Company, and at that time, the larger portion of the Microsoft property was retained by Polygon, and the smaller portion, which is what we're discussing here in this process, the 22 acres, was retained by Shelter in an entity, to be correct, because it's not specifically Shelter.
Was Shelter aware of the 1996 Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement when it acquired the property?
Yes.
How did Shelter become aware of that document?
Just as a course of due diligence.
Do you recall, was it provided specifically to you as part of the due diligence process by the seller?
It's, the process normally in most acquisitions is the buyer's responsible for doing all the research, and so we did that.
Did you review the development agreement at the time of purchase as part of your due diligence process?
Did I personally review it, or?
Shelter.
Well, we have a team and a number of people reviewed various components of it. It's a very extensive document, so I can't testify as to whether every page was reviewed or, yeah.
Were you part of that review team?
I was on the, at maybe the senior level, maybe more in an advisory capacity, not reviewing every part of it.
So Shelter was aware of the '96 Development Agreement. Were you also aware of the build-out period identified in the agreement and that it was scheduled to expire in 2017?
At the time, I don't think there was clarity that there was a specific date for the build-out period, and it was later in the process when that discussion came up. I think there were different interpretations as to what that build-out period was.
Before, I'm sorry.
That's just from my memory, not factual.
Appreciate the clarification. Before or during Shelter's acquisition of the property in 2013 or 14, did Shelter have any communications with the seller regarding mitigation that had previously been provided under the 1996 Development Agreement?
The seller sold us the property with all of the rights that the seller had, and so that's what we analyzed in our feasibility and determined.
Do you recall if mitigation, previously provided mitigation, was part of that process?
Absolutely.
Part of that review? And were any of those communications and review documents distilled to writing?
I don't believe so.
Do you recall the substance of those communications regarding mitigation? What was, what was said and by who?
No.
Was mitigation under the 1996 Development Agreement addressed in the purchase and sale transactional documents when Shelter or Polygon acquired the property, specifically identified as an evaluation component?
It would be, I'm sorry, you're asking, was, would you mind rephrasing the question just so I understand that I'm approaching it correctly?
When Shelter acquired the property?
Yes.
Was any value assigned in the transactional documents between the seller and the purchaser that specifically addressed mitigation that had previously been provided under the Development Agreement?
I think the best way I can answer that is that in the feasibility work, there was the determination of, of the mitigation, and so that would be the step.
Do you recall if there were any contingencies in the transactional documents for this purchase and sale transaction specifically related to mitigation issue?
I do not recall.
I believe your counsel handed you a copy of a July 8, 2013 through July 2, 2013, email exchange ending with a Monday, July 8, 2013 message from Derek Straight, and I believe that document was marked as Exhibit S-111. Do you still have a copy of that?
Yes, I have it here.
Thank you. Could I ask you to refer down on the first page of that document, in the email from Derek Straight primarily addressed to Keith Niven, but also courtesy copied to yourself and Bob Harrison on July 2, 2013? Do you see that document?
I'm not, I think I do. This is July, Tuesday, July 2, 5:20 PM.
That's correct. Correct. And beginning with the paragraph reading "first as it pertains to market value," could you please read the first three sentences of that paragraph to me? If you could read through the word "schedule" at the end of the third sentence, I'm sorry, at the, at the end of the fourth sentence.
Okay. "First as it pertains to market value, our purchase of blocks 21 and 22 should be the yardstick. This was a public process with a property that had entitlement and several buyers at the table. In this case, we purchased roughly 9.5 acres for $12 million plus $2.5 million in fees payable to Port Blakely. At $14.5 million for 9.5 acres, our per acre price was $1.526 million. We also had short feasibility timeframes and closing schedule."
Thank you. The reference in what you, the statement that you just read to "we purchased roughly 9.5 acres for $12 million plus $2.5 million in fees payable to Port Blakely," could you explain to me what that is in, in reference to? Who's the "we" in that sentence?
I'm thinking that that is Polygon and the purchase of blocks 21 and 22.
And is that figure, $12 million plus $2.5 million in fees, is that accurate, your knowledge?
Well, this was Derek's email, and I, I can't verify outside of reading what he wrote.
Do you have any knowledge that would indicate that that reference is inaccurate as a statement of, of what Polygon paid in acquiring the property?
I can't say either way. This is a comment, but when you're purchasing real estate, there's all kinds of costs and factors. I think the way I read this, Derek's trying to express a point in a, in the best way he can, in a general way, because these are rounded numbers as I would see, but I, I can't say whether, how close or accurate.
Fair enough.
I have no memory of that.
Do you know what was referred to through the reference of $2.5 million in fees as part of that purchase price?
It relates to, I believe, no, I can't really, I can't really define that.
Okay, thank you. Do you recall Mr. Niven's testimony from the September 26, 2018 hearing regarding Shelter's original efforts to gain community and city support for a mixed and/or residential use proposal that would have exceeded Shelter's original entitlement? And for the record, counsel, this would be at the September 26 transcript at pages 104 through 108.
I guess I'd have to read it to just...
My counsel will hand you a copy of that for reference. 104 to 108.
Do you mind pointing to?
Page 104 right there.
And I don't need you to read that aloud.
I'm looking at page, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Young, I don't need you to read that aloud. I'm just asking you to refamiliarize yourself with his testimony.
So I'm looking at page 104?
Yes, through 108.
Through 108.
Thank you. Mr. Niven testified that Shelter acquired the property in approximately 2013 in the testimony that you just read, approximately four years before the expiration of the build-out period. Do you agree with that general assessment?
Well, I wasn't, I can't, well, I can't testify as to the, what I agree on the end of the build-out period, but I guess we start in 2013.
Is that your answer?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Niven also testified, and this is a direct quote on page 105, that instead of submitting permit applications to develop its property expeditiously after it acquired the property, IHIFC instead sought some type of rezone or amendment to the agreement. Is that an accurate statement from your perspective?
I'm sorry, but I'm not, which line are you starting from?
That's from line 11 through line 15.
11 on page 105?
Correct.
And, I'm sorry, you're, how far did you read down to 15?
Yes, just the five lines.
And your question?
Agree with Mr. Niven's statement?
No.
You tell me why you disagree with it.
Well, it's kind of taken out of context here. Instead of submitting permit applications of that was property expeditiously, for a development of the scale and size, the first thing you do is to start working with the city and determining what the basic property can be developed as, and there's a whole series of steps and a lot of time, which is what we were doing. So I would say we were working expeditiously to develop a plan for our property and entertaining, as I've expressed earlier tonight, multiple different meetings to, to achieve that goal, but it could not be summarized in this way.
Did Shelter submit permit applications to develop its property under its then-existing entitlement under the Development Agreement?
I'm not really understanding your question. We did, we're here tonight reviewing our applications.
And those applications for tonight's proceeding were submitted in 2017.
Yes.
I'm asking you, after you acquired the property, after Shelter acquired the property in 2013 or 2014?
Yes.
Did you proceed to file permit applications to develop the property in a manner that would have been allowed under the Development Agreement at that time?
As you've heard Tia's testimony and mine, the time period from 2013 to 17 was going through all the steps to be able to, to get to that step. So that was a huge effort on our part, I would say, expeditious and extensive. This is not one lot or one office building on a corner. This is, just the retail component is 11 buildings. This property is, is the magnitude, it's so difficult to talk about because of the scale and the size of it, and so it really can't be referred to in talking about, did you file a permit or not? It's a, it has to be a carefully thought-out property, and for that reason, we had to go through those years of work, and, and we've explained what happened in that process.
And those years of work, I believe that you're referring to, involved the community outreach efforts by Shelter?
As one step.
And was the end goal or objective of Shelter from that community outreach effort intended to result in a modification of the Development Agreement to allow a particular type of use that was not otherwise allowed at the time?
I don't know quite how to answer that question. I don't, I don't remember what the technical step would be in that process, but it was a process that we would follow with the city if the city was in agreement.
So is it your understanding that the city would have had to have approved that type of use, and that would have been a change from what was allowed at the time under the Development Agreement?
The residential component to the scale would have required some additional...
And do you remember what type of approval would have been required by the city in order to authorize that type of residential component that you referred to?
I'd have to defer to Tia.
You don't recall offhand?
No.
Do you know if staff could have approved that type of change, or whether that was something that the City Council would have had to done?
I can't really comment because I'd want to understand what I'm commenting on and...
Thank you. How long again did Shelter's attempts to gain community support for the mixed use or residential development plan last approximately?
Well, I think we started initial work 2015, 16, and then through that time period to the end of 16. But we, we've been participating and active in the community since we got involved with the property. We support the Highland Days, and we're in part of the community, and we had other developments that we were working on in the community. So part of community outreach is, is being involved, the community aware of the community, so I'd say it's, it's a longer period than, than that.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, that community outreach period?
I think, I would call our community outreach period started in the 2013. I mean, when we bought the property, we were already developing in the community, and we're already working to understand what the needs of the community are.
And when did that community outreach effort terminate?
I don't know if it's, I don't, wouldn't call it terminated now. I mean, I think we're in a community outreach period. One, one other thing to remember is that when we essentially were told that the residential component would not be acceptable to the council and to proceed with the commercial component, we had a community outreach meeting that January to go to the community to explain what had happened, because they were all waiting to see our mixed use proposal proceed.
That was January of 2015?
No, that would have been 16, I believe. I have to think about this for, would have been...
And just to clarify your testimony, Mr. Young...
Let me think for a minute. This would be, if we had, our meeting's in 16, so it would have been in 17.
January?
Yes.
Just to clarify, but I understood your testimony to be, you indicated that Shelter's community outreach efforts to gain support for potential residential uses are still ongoing even today?
I wouldn't, no. I'd say to correctly answer that, we shifted to the commercial, the applications that we have in front of us.
When did you end your, cease your efforts to obtain community support specifically for the mixed use slash residential?
Well, I think that, I would define that as, as when we, we reached out to the public and had that, that public open house, we had started with our applications and said that these would be coming, and, and that would be the point where we put our focus on the commercial part. on the commercial part.
And approximately, what timeframe was that?
That's in the spring of 17.
Spring of 2017, okay.
If I'm, I'm just struggling a little bit with that date of that, that community outreach meeting, so that would be the driver.
And do you recall a particular impetus for changing Shelter's focus in that way? What was the driving reason?
The driver was that we were completely rejected. We were told that the mayor essentially said that the council was not interested in any residential in the community, and we were told that we needed to proceed with another alternative. And that was essentially Keith specifically directing us and telling us that information. I think that's important in this discussion, is that he essentially told us this was the information that he had, and this was the direction he was giving us.
And this information that Mr. Niven had, did you understand that to be coming originally from the city council, or from the city administration, or neither, or both?
I think probably both.
Did Shelter ever directly approach the Issaquah City Council during this period and vet the mixed-use residential proposal with the council itself?
I think through the public process and the, the open houses, council members attended, and we had the opportunity to communicate with different council members.
You're presumably aware that there's been much discussion, both in your own testimony and the, the testimony, I believe you heard from Ms. Heim regarding the, the allegation that the city had essentially required or compelled Shelter or Polygon to give or donate or reserve portions of its property for a potential college or university in exchange for allowing other uses on the site? Do you recall that testimony? And for council's benefit, that's at least for purposes of Ms. Heim's transcript at the January 15th, transcript at 74 and 76. Recall that, Mr. Young?
From the, the notes that we had read earlier this evening, if that's what you're referring to, yes.
Do you have personal recollections of those discussions where the city allegedly required Shelter to donate property in the manner that was suggested?
Yes.
Apart from your testimony here tonight, in answering Ms. Carey's questions, were there other communications from the city that conveyed that same point that you're aware of?
I'm not sure what your question is. There are many, many communications as we see them all here.
Were there anything, was there any other communication in writing apart from what has been submitted into evidence in this proceeding that you're aware of?
I, I couldn't speak to that because there's just so much information.
I'm going to introduce a new exhibit and ask my co-council to hand this to you and to the Development Commission. This is, for the record, a two-page email string on August 22nd, 2013, involving several individuals, but primarily Derek Straight, John Hempelman, Bob H., Keith N., yourself, and Midori Dillon. Do you recognize this document?
I'm just looking at it now for a minute.
Sure. Please take your time. I'd also note that you were listed as a courtesy copy recipient in this email chain.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm now going to be introducing a separate August 2nd, 2013 document entitled "Letter of Intent to Amend Grand Ridge Annexation and Development Agreement." And this is marked as Exhibit C-46. Are you familiar with this document, Mr. Young?
I just need a minute. It's been quite a few years, so there were many, many documents that, and discussions in that time period. So, go ahead. What is your question?
Thank you. Could you look back on the August 22nd, 2013 email exchange, C-45, and specifically on the bottom of page two, the message from Derek Straight to Bob Harrison, Keith Niven, Jay Hempelman, and yourself as a courtesy copy recipient?
I'm sorry, this is the bottom of page two?
Correct. This is the 7:57 a.m. email message from Thursday, August 22nd, 2013. Do you see that?
Yes.
Could you please read the first sentence of Mr. Straight's email?
Gentlemen, draft LOI is attached. Is that what you're asking me to read in the interest of trying to get this signed?
And is LOI an acronym for Letter of Intent, as far as you understand, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have you look back to Exhibit C-46, please, the Letter of Intent to amend the Grand Ridge Annexation and Development Agreement?
Yes.
To whom is this document addressed?
City of Issaquah.
And the specific salutation is "Dear Ava." Do you know who Ava refers to?
I'm assuming it might be the mayor, but I'm not sure.
Would it be Ava Frissinger?
I think possibly, but there might be a different person. I don't know.
And could you please go to the, the back page, the final page of that document, and look at the signatory block on the left upper portion of that document?
Yes.
Is that you in the signatory block, Gary A. Young of Polygon?
Yep.
And is, I believe that you testified that Derek Straight was an associate or subordinate of yours at that time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you describe what this letter of intent was proposing?
It was proposing a series of steps for exchanging, providing for the college on 20 acre portion of the site.
Could you please read subsection one on the first page of that document, beginning with "to partner"?
"To partner with the city in order to make an approximately 20 acre portion of the site available for purchase for a designated period of time to attract a college, university, or other commercial user."
Thank you. I'd now like to introduce a new exhibit, and this will be Exhibit C-47. And I apologize if this is redundant, but I'm going to provide it to you regardless. It may already be in the record. This is a December 18th, 2015 letter to City of Issaquah Development Services Department on IHIF Commercial LLC. Letterhead. Is that your signature at the bottom of this letter, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Do you recall this letter?
Not right off the top of my head, but I'm reading it.
Thank you. I'll give you a few moments to refamiliarize yourself with the document.
Okay, yes.
Could you please read the third and fourth sentences of that first paragraph out loud?
Third, which, where would you want me to start?
Beginning with "the build-out period."
The build-out period under the original DA expires in 2017.
And what does the next sentence provide?
The planning and development of the IHIF property will need to occur over a longer period of time than remains under the original DA.
Thank you. What was the purpose of sending this letter to the City of Issaquah on December 18th, 2015?
This, this letter followed a series of meetings that we had to move to, be, just thinking on my timeline here, move forward with our, the results of our market research and to start our community outreach.
Is it an accurate characterization, based on the content of the first paragraph of this letter, Mr. Young, that you were formally asking the city to entertain a new development agreement for the Issaquah Highlands property?
Well, over, in that period of time, we'd had meetings with Keith and discussed different ways to work with the development agreement, one of which would have been to use the development agreement for the Swedish hospital, and other was to extend the existing. And here, I just have to read it again. So we're looking at a new development agreement to be able to move ahead, which was essentially Keith's direction to us, that Keith's direction to us, that we should proceed on that basis.
Is there any reference in this letter to any direction that you received that effect from Mr. Niven?
It's just my recollection of the meetings that we had had prior.
Thank you. I'd like to shift gears and briefly return back to a subject of much discussion in these proceedings, and this was, again, brought out under your direct testimony this evening. And this apparently concerned a, a meeting, I believe it was on September 9th, 2013, where Director Niven was, I believe in your words, very angry. And I want to hopefully paraphrase you accurately, but I believe you indicated that he was angry that you'd never seen anyone in a meeting, or words to that effect. Is that an accurate characterization?
Yes, yeah.
Could you please describe how Mr. Niven appeared and sounded, or and/or sounded angry at that meeting?
Raised voice, just complexion, the experience that I think if we have experience of being with someone that's angry, that those, all of those.
Did he yell at you?
Voice was raised.
Did he curse at you?
I do not remember. I don't think, I don't think so. No.
Did he ever refuse to meet with you after that, as a further manifestation of his anger?
I don't believe so.
Did he ever hang up the phone on you?
No.
I'd like to refer you back to the meeting minutes that occurred, I believe, for this meeting, and I believe you have a copy of them, or you should have a copy. Your council distributed them, I believe, but did not formally enter them into evidence. It's entitled "Shelter Holdings LLC: Microsoft Commercial Meeting Minutes," with the attendees listed as Mayor Fred Butler, Keith Niven, Bob Harrison, Gary Young, and Eric Evans. Do you have that document?
Yes.
Thank you. We'd like to actually introduce this into evidence, please, and I believe this would be Exhibit C-48. I believe you testified, Mr. Young, that Mr. Evans prepared these meeting minutes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did you participate in drafting them at all?
Reviewing.
Sorry?
Reviewing the minutes, yes.
Okay. Were there revisions made to the meeting minutes after you reviewed them? Do you recall?
I don't think, I can't recall directly. Eric does a very good job of keeping minutes.
So Eric, minutes, to your understanding, are accurate as drafted?
Yes.
Is the meeting that's being described here the same one that Mr. Niven allegedly became very angry in the way that you described previously?
Yes.
Is there any reference to Mr. Niven's anger, or any manifestation of his anger in these meeting minutes?
I don't, I'd have to read every...
Please do. Please do.
So the, I think the point of intensity was page four of five, six point oh. Keith Niven reiterated that retail can't be placed on the commercial campus only office, and that was in extreme intensity. Keith Niven indicated that the proposed plots don't have concurrency. And so in minute, the minutes that we've kept for all of our meetings that we have, we've never gone to characterize individuals or emotional expressions. We try to keep our minutes based to the factual information that's there. So it would be totally out of the ordinary to, to say something. We were all there. We knew what happened. And, and so the purposes of the minutes are to be able to identify the key points that were said and not how they were said.
Could you please turn to the first page of the meeting minutes in section two point zero?
I'm sorry, I'm going.
Page one.
Two pa, two point zero, yes. Overview history.
Correct. And the third item, beginning with Gary Young acknowledged. Could you please read that aloud?
Gary Young acknowledged the support of the staff, specifically Keith Niven, through the process.
This was at the meeting that Mr. Niven became very angry?
This was at the beginning.
Could you also then turn to page three? And under the four point oh heading, read item number seven, beginning with Keith Niven offered.
Keith, Keith Niven offered that they thought they had a gentleman's agreement and referenced an earlier email.
Thank you.
And that, just to explain the context, that was in the context of why we were having the meeting. And I was, my concern was expressing that we could not go forward with the college program because we were, first of all, the structure of the transaction was not feasibly, economically feasible for us. And then secondly, we were aware that the City of Bellevue was already way down the road with a new college proposal and that the likelihood of this would be almost zero. And we could not represent that to the community. And so that's why we said what we said.
And just so I'm clear, Mr. Young, Mr. Niven's response at subsection seven in the four point oh cell that, Mr. Niven offered that they thought they had a gentleman's agreement? That was Mr. Niven's response? Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to now offer a new exhibit, C-49. This is an email chain, for the record, beginning on October 5, 2016, and ending October 25, 2016. The most recent email in the chain dated October 25, 2016, was from Mayor Fred Butler, or then Mayor Fred Butler, addressed to Tia Heim, Eileen Barber, Mariah Batiste, Stacy Goodman, Tola Martz, Mary Lou Polly, Ellie Ramos, Paul Winterstein, Mayor and City Council, with a courtesy copy to yourself, Mr. Niven, Emily Moon, Lucy Sloman, Patrick Mulaney. Do you recognize this document, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Could you describe this document for me? What's going on here?
This is a letter from the mayor, essentially on behalf of the city. Let me just read the. So this was the, the message that, for all the work that we'd done on our community outreach, that that program, this is not supported by the administration. Our vision for the property, it was the collective vision of results of working with the community and input from the community. And then it says you also asked for a 20-year development agreement to allow for your build-out of the property. So.
And just to clarify, did you characterize this email response from Mayor Butler as essentially declining the mixed-use residential proposal that at that point Shelter had been engaged in community outreach efforts on?
Yes.
Thank you. And that will conclude my questioning. Thank you very much, Mr. Young.
Thank you very much.
I'll have a brief redirect, I believe, but I wanted to request a break for our court reporter, just for maybe five minutes, that we can get some air.
Okay. What kind of timeline are you thinking your redirect will be?
I think 15 minutes. It won't take me very long.
Okay, 15 real minutes.
Really, you can hold me to it.
Okay, I'll do that. Appreciate the public for hanging with us. We'll get to you. Let's take a five-minute break. Our, our court reporter, the, the, there's a literal transcript, verbatim transcript being kept, and our court reporter is a little under the weather. So we'd like to acknowledge, give her five minutes to kind of collect herself. So thank you. Five minutes, we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back on the air and back in session.
Thank you. So we're starting with a redirect of Mr. Young. Gary, if you could look at the exhibit that was marked as C-47. It should be the December 18, 2015, letter.
Yes, I have it in front of me.
So a minute ago, when you were testifying, you mentioned that this arose out of something with Director Niven and Swedish or a hospital. Can, can you give us a little bit more context for how this letter came to be?
The letter came to be, as we were exploring the ways to proceed, as you can see in this letter, and in meeting with Keith, he was very pleased with the Swedish hospital development agreement. And so essentially said that for us to take it, we got a copy of that agreement and to rework the agreement so that it would work applicable to our property. So that was what got us to this discussion.
Where is the Swedish property in relation to Shelter?
It's immediate, it's adjacent to the, I guess, would it be to south? Or there's a vacant land and then, and then the hospital itself.
Did this discussion about either a new development agreement or an extension of a development agreement, did that have anything to do with vesting?
No. We, we always have worked on the basis that we're vested to the development agreement.
So earlier in your testimony, if I heard this right, you had testified along the lines of that you didn't care about vesting.
No.
Was it that you didn't care about it, or can you clarify that, that statement in light of what you just said?
It sounds very odd for me to make a comment, perhaps that I don't care. We are very obviously concerned about that and the vesting. And so maybe for clarification, we have always proceeded on the basis of our understanding for my entire career. But going specifically to development agreement, we vest to the development agreement. And so that's just our, our, our assumption and belief. And added in numerous discussions with Keith, the discussion was always that we'd be working under the development agreement. We'd be vesting to the development agreement. It was never really a discussion. The discussion about timelines was always just to have an agreement in place that ran forward for future, for future use.
So when you say, when you said just a moment ago, vesting to the development agreement. So when you say, when you said just a moment ago, vesting to the development agreement, was there any question in your mind that vested rights that were vested under the development agreement would continue on after the expiration of the development agreement?
I always assumed they'd always continue on. If we made our application in the process, we continue on under the development agreement.
And is that something that you had been told by Director Niven as well?
Yes.
Did those statements by Director Niven, did that happen in any of the meetings that we talked about earlier in your testimony?
Yes.
We turn to the meeting minutes, please. Again, that binder. So we're going to turn to, I'll grab mine really quick. The November 14, 2016 meeting notes, please. And I want to turn back to this bullet point, one, two, three bullet points from the bottom. Starts with Keith went on to point out. We talked about this earlier in your testimony. But, and I just asked you a question about if Keith had made mention of the vesting continuing on after expiration. Is this one of those instances?
Yes.
And can you explain what Director Niven told you in this meeting?
That essentially, we're vested. We proceed under the development agreement and there's no gap. It's there.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
No read, Rick. No further cross from the city. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. That brings us to the point where the public has an opportunity to voice their opinion. And so we would encourage you, what we would like you to do is, we don't have a sign-in sheet, but because we are taking a verbatim testimony, we would like you to come up and state your name and then spell it so that our recorder can get it right and then make your comment. There's a number of people, so we would ask that you try to limit your comments to about five minutes if that'll work. So you can self-decide who goes first. We're ready for you.
Good evening. I'm Fred Neistrom, 391 Southeast Sycamore Creek Lane, where I've been for 35 years in Issaquah. It wasn't too long ago that I sat in your chairs in this very room and listened to the debate over the launching and the start of the Issaquah Highlands. And I followed the development very closely over the past 20-some years. What was true then remains true now in that for the 20 years a development agreement has been in place, the city was consistent in telling developers and later builders that when their project was vested, the city would not mess around with their development rights. Without that trust, there never would have been anything built in the Highlands. I've watched and been a part of the maturation of the Highlands for these many years. I've managed a home there for people with developmental disabilities, and I've served on the Highlands Council. So I had a bird's eye view of the things that were going on there, including the many, sat into the many meetings that were referenced here tonight on usability that was proposed by Shelter Holdings. Other than that, I have no financial stake in any piece of property or any part of a development in the Highlands. I'm here as an interested citizen. My wife asked me tonight, she said, "Why are you leaving the sunny back porch we're sitting on tonight and going down to the meeting?" And I said, I told her that I'm very disappointed in the loss of trust and integrity and confidence that we're experiencing on a national level with our politicians. Every day another distortion. Some truths are twisted up, so it's hard to tell what's right and what's wrong. I don't want any part of that in the community that I love, not a single ounce of it. I'm sure you know that in the world of building and development, a vesting is a legal commitment. It's something the builder can take to the bank and use it to fund homes or buildings for businesses. A vesting says that I, the city, have put you through incredible hurdles so that you can get your project approved. And now that you've been approved, you have the right to develop your proposal, and further, you have the ability and the right to do it when you're ready to. Vesting is a core, nationally-recognized planning document. It carries the weight and the impact of a promise. Consistently, over the past decade, I have heard staff and council members directly say that the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, when it expires, every single landowner would be treated with consistently. They would carry their same vesting and zoning into the new agreement with the city of Issaquah. I'm sure that they believed that when they said it, because it was very consistent. Now we're at one of those moral crossroads where the highly unusual idea has spawned within the city that they can backtrack on a decade of adherence to vesting rules and instead make the claim that they have the ability to cancel, or I love the term, de-vest the developer of their agreed developmental rights. Now let that concept sink in for a little bit, if you will. They have the right to change the playing field. On a personal note, think about it this way. You found a beautiful lot in Issaquah, and it's permitted to have a three-bedroom, two-story, 3,000-square-foot home on it. So you buy that home. And then later, you get a notice from the city. It's sort of a whoops. "We have unpermitted you, and now what you can build is a 1,000-square-foot one-bedroom Rambler." Same situation. So remember that behind all the city claims of their rights, and while what they are doing is de-permitting in a major way, a very important part of our community. In my heart, I know this is wrong. It's deceitful. It lacks integrity, and worse yet, it messes up the entire trust relationship between the builders and the municipalities. I hope that you don't waste one more moment in doning this distortion of good, standard business practices. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Tracy Corgiate, T-R-A-C-Y-C-O-R-G-I-A-T. I work for the Poli Clinic. I'm the Vice President of Development there. And we're a physician group based predominantly in Seattle. We serve about 220,000 patients there. About 10% of our patients are on the east side. So we've for some time now wanted to expand and build a multi-specialty clinic on the east side, and we're in the midst of making that decision. I came tonight because the property that's been in discussion is one that's been of interest to us, especially with its proximity to Swedish where we admit our patients. And I was mostly interested in, is that a property that's going to be available? Because we're in the throes of wanting to do this in the next year. I hadn't planned on commenting, but thought Mr. Young's comment was really important that we need to know if things are going to be able to happen for people who are going to come in. And we're no Microsoft, you know, but we bring jobs. We bring health care that our research shows the community needs. The research we've done says you could use 25-plus primary care physicians. We won't bring that many, but the community is underserved in that. You need rheumatologists. You need cardiologists. You need neurologists. There are other things you need as well, and that's what the research shows. And I'm sure your community's getting them now, but they're driving for them. And I think as a North Bend resident, I have really enjoyed over the last 20 years going into Seattle less and getting all my services here. And I think the Swedish Hospital has been an amazing contribution to the community, and we would want to complement that and put specialties there that maybe they don't serve or meet the community needs more. So we are, in the next 30 to 60 days, making a decision on whether our east side will be Bellevue or Issaquah. This is the place that seems to make the most sense in Issaquah. And you know, how this turns out in the next month or so probably makes a difference on that decision for us. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Charlie Connor, C-H-A-R-L-I-E-C-O-N-N-E-R. I was a resident of Issaquah for many years, raised my children here. And I'm also in the home building business. So I'm a concerned citizen here as a concerned citizen. One other thing that's really important, and we've heard this earlier from Gary, is predictability. We need a set of rules that we can follow, and we need to know that there will be integrity in the process, and that if we follow the rules and we work with the jurisdiction, we can get a project approved and build whatever it is that we are building, whether that's single-family residential or commercial or anything. And without a set of rules and without being able to rely on vesting, then I'm fearful for where our industry will go for many reasons. It's very difficult to do any kind of a land use project nowadays. My father started in the late 50s, and it was pretty quick to get things approved, very few inspections. We bought a lot of great homes. Those are now the affordable housing out there. We have a real shortage of housing, so I'm disappointed here that this project won't have housing in it. But my main concern is that we need to be able to rely on a set of rules. We need to be able to rely on vesting. And if we can't, then how are we going to produce whatever products that we need from a land use standpoint? Because there's just so much risk inherent in the construction itself. Now there's political risk. And where does that drive us to? Does it drive us to larger and larger entities that are building, lack of local players in the market like myself, who've been here for now in the second generation of the business? It further concentrates the business into the larger players who have more capital, can spend years. And that money doesn't necessarily stay here because it's out of multinational corporations or national corporations, publicly traded corporations. We need to keep building companies like mine viable. And I just see that if vesting is overturned in this case, that is a terrible precedent to set for our locality, for our society. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Hi there. My name is Mike Zalewski, Z-A-L-E-W-S-K-I. I'm a resident of 943 Third Avenue Northeast in West Highlands Park. As a West Highlands Park resident, we've been trying to follow a lot of the development around us pretty closely over the last several years between the West Ridge development and the north and south, along with the Shelter Holding. So I've been able to attend the town meetings that you have, and it was really informative. So I actually found the pictures I had on my phone back in July of 2015 that I don't know if that was actually the last town meeting or not, but it had the concepts of what was going to be built on the property. So my comments don't necessarily have to do with any of the vesting or the legalities that we're talking about here, but more of what's being built on the property. It feels like being part of the process of other development subjects, it seems like a lot of the minds are made up and the process is ongoing, that there's really no room for any changes at that point. So I wanted to get my comments on record now, if there's any opportunities for change in what's actually built on the property. And the one that I'm specifically interested in that is adjacent to West Highlands Park, it'll be adjacent to the affordable housing on the West Ridge development, and then at the entrance of the new West Ridge South that exists now, is the block E9 with the proposal for a storage facility. During the 2015 concepts, it had to do with, the plan was some multi-story townhomes, and I understand that residential is not part of this plan. But that actually didn't seem so bad compared to something like a storage facility. And most of the folks that I talked to around the area aren't really interested in that type of structure there, in that there's already a storage facility less than a half a mile away in the Highlands already. It just doesn't seem to fit the character of the area. And so I would request, and fellow neighbors would request, if Shelter could maybe put the thinking caps back on and think of some other options there that might be more cohesive with a residential surrounding, with the idea of hopefully having some good amount of open space. So that's kind of my main comment here, is if we can just revisit what we're developing around that block E9 to be more conducive to residential living. Thanks.
Hi. This one, or this one? Doesn't matter, I guess. My name is Jonathan Leonwing, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N. Last name Leonwing, L-I space O-N space W-I-N-G. I live on 454 Fifth Ave. I appreciate and understand the need for developers to have predictability. But there are needs for, there is a need for, and a reason for expiry, and permits should be modified and canceled to accommodate the city and the residents' needs. The mayor, the city council, the Issaquah government, the main responsibility is to the residents and should have the residents' best interests at heart. But I know there are concerns here about vesting, but I cannot really speak to that. I'm not a lawyer or anything. But my main comment is, just like Mike, is regarding a storage facility, I think the plan's like ASDP 18-0006. Sorry, I'm going to speak slower. Where do you want me to restart? I'll start from. So I know there are concerns about vesting. Can't really speak to that. I'm not really a lawyer, and I don't really understand that part too much. But my main comment is the storage facility that even Mike brought up. I think the permit, well, you guys know what the permit number is and everything. And I don't really have a concern about the clinic, and actually would appreciate having a medical clinic nearby and not needing to go so far, assuming that they follow the IHCA rules. But my main concern-- But my main concern is the storage facility. I'm looking at property values. I think that's going to lower the property values nearby. It makes the neighborhood less desirable. Also, concerns regarding the noise level, and whether we can actually make sure and ensure that they conform to the noise levels. And I think that, right now, we have regulations in place that has to meet 45 decibels or lower, and I'm not sure whether a storage facility can really take care of that. To reiterate what Mike had said, I don't believe there's a need for a second storage facility when there's one in the community nearby, and I don't really think that it's going to meet the character of the community. For those reasons, I would like to ask that the developer reconsider's this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Satya Prasad Ramasathan. I'll spell that out.
I'm sorry, you need to speak in the microphone. They can't hear you. And there's two there, so whichever one best fits.
I'm Satya Prasad Ramasathan. I'll spell my name for you. It's S-A-T-Y-A-P-R-A-S-A-D. That's just my first name. And then my last name is Ramasathan, R-A-M-A-S-E-S-H-A-N. I blame my parents for all of it. So, I've been an Issaquah resident since April of last year. I live in one of the Polygon homes, and my address is 401 Fifth Avenue Northeast. I, just like a couple of my neighborhood friends, I don't know much about the vesting. I'm not here to talk about that either. But I am concerned about the proposal to develop a storage unit right across from where our homes are. Like some of the reasons that have already been expressed, I think it's redundant. There is a storage facility less than half a mile away, just in the Highlands. There's another one, I think, close to Gilman Boulevard and Front Street in Issaquah. So, from a utility standpoint, we gain nothing out of it. Secondly, I do think there is a property value issue, having a giant storage facility in front of all these homes. And we know home prices have been really high lately, so we would not want anything to diminish the value of those home prices for us. So, that is a problem. The third thing is the opportunity cost. There is a bigger need for more useful things. I think parents would be happy if there was some sort of a childcare facility. Pet owners may be happy if there was some sort of a pet care facility. Or there could be more restaurants, bars. Just more retail in general is a better direction, because you've increased the footprint of residents. Now, you probably need a bigger footprint for retail that matches up with the number of homeowners that are there. That is likely going to make more people happy, and bring more jobs, bring more, make the community more vibrant, and be overall more useful. That's the number-one thing I want to object to, the storage facility, and I hope there is some way we can walk away from that decision. Secondly, as far as the hospital goes, I do welcome that coming into our neighborhood. I do have one concern. I think that, from a traffic flow standpoint, that could cause a huge jam on Discovery and Highland, that traffic light. So, if there is any, I think there should be careful consideration into how that building is designed, so that we don't congest that traffic light. Because that would really cause a huge problem for homeowners in that particular area, getting in and out of the dolmen in the morning and in the evening. So, those are the two things that I wanted to address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Walker. It's G-E-O-F-F. Last name Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R. I live at 2001 16th Court Northeast up in Issaquah Highlands. All right. This is kind of difficult for me, I'll be honest with you, and I'll try and take you through it a little bit. I've been a resident of Issaquah Highlands for just over 20 years now, one of the longest residents there. I've been on the Urban Village Development Commission for 19 years, chairman for the last 10 or so. For those that have followed the UBDC, will probably know that I have been a strong proponent of the development agreement in terms of the balance of residential, commercial, all the different uses that we have up there for a live, work, and play community, sociable public realm, plazas, everything that we're doing. I've been a very strong proponent of keeping that balance in check. Over the years, we've had many, many more residential units being built over the commercial stuff, and we kept pushing off that balance for a long time. People also note that I have been a very strong proponent of property owners' rights. If somebody has entitlements or rights on their property, I've not been one to advocate taking those away or diminishing them for the good of the community, because I believe that, you know, they buy and they invest in good faith on the stuff that they say they're going to do. So, this is really hard for me, because I've spent many years with Mr. Niven and Ms. Sloman and their teams, and they've worked tirelessly, and sometimes I'm shocked at how long and hard they work on things, and how much compromise they provide, and how much guidance they provide, and sometimes how much, you know, sometimes frustrating us as both a community and a commission, because it's a challenging project. On the flip side, Shelter Holdings specifically reached out to me and a few other people, and a lot of other people, really, and asked what we would be interested in seeing on the property. They've been very respectful to me and others. I thought they were very misguided, and they know this, we've been very straightforward about this, but when they proposed the 1,800 units, knowing that we only had, they only had three, entitlement for three, I was very, very adamant about the fact that I didn't want to see any more residential units, given that balance statement I made earlier, and I really, really wanted to see office, commercial, retail. So, getting to the point, I'm not going to talk about vesting, I'll let that play out from a legal standpoint. I'm not going to talk about the end of the development agreement. That's not my place to discuss. But I will say, and this won't be new for Shelter to hear, but I'm quite disappointed in what they are planning to build, whether it's a storage unit, the large parking lot, single-story retail to mirror or complement what's already there at Grand Ridge. Because we all know that Grand Ridge Plaza was supposed to be something different. We tried really hard for years to get it to be something different than what it ended up being, which is okay now. I really like how it functions, but there are better ways to do things. So, I don't have any, I can't take one side or the other. I see both sides of the argument. Again, I'm not going to talk about vesting. I want to see how that plays out. But if it's, in fact, if in fact they end up with the rights that they believe they have, I am not one to take away, or even propose taking away, their right to do something. I would implore them to also reconsider, see what might be feasible economically around office, around campus, around childcare, around retail, around restaurants. I think we're missing a really huge opportunity to do things like multi-story building with a rooftop restaurant, bars, places for music, all of those things. And none of this is new information for Tia and Gary. None of this is new information for Lucy and Keith. But I just wanted to share my opinion on this. However it lays out legally, I fully support, but I really would like to see a reconsideration of what's built there. Thank you very much.
I think we've heard from everybody, from the public. I lost your letter, so. Does this seem to be a reasonable time to conclude early for the first time?
It does, Mr. Chairman. Could we clarify the logistics of scheduling for purposes of the next installment? I think that was an open-ended point when we last reconvened.
Before we get to scheduling, could we clarify what documents the staff are submitting into the record as part of the public comment? There was a package on our table when we got here that I assume purports to be the comments, the written comments that have been received, but I think we need some testimony about that. And the first item in the package is a February 8, 2018, letter from Rich Hill, who is a land-use attorney, speaking on behalf of Regency Centers. And my understanding is there is a cover email sent within the last day or two submitting this document that's more than a year old, and I think the cover email needs to be part of the submittal, if this 2018 document is going to be included as well. So, I think we need to make it absolutely clear on the record what is being offered by staff, and if it needs to be a complete transmittal, not just the February 2018 document, if that is part of the submittal.
Lucy, could you give us a clarification on it?
And Ms. Heim points out to me that she's looked at the OneDrive link that was sent out, and the documents that are on that appear to be different than the documents that are in this package. So, again, we have a need for clarification.
So, over the course, over the course of the application, processing the application, we have received emails, which I had collected. This afternoon, a number of letters came in via email, some to Keith Niven, one to the General DSD email, and one to me. And because these came in around 4:30 this afternoon, I was not studying them in detail. Mr. Snyder's point is well-taken. I assumed this was a new letter and didn't look at it closely. I'd be glad to provide the cover emails for any documents that were received late this afternoon, so that the full transmittal is complete.
Okay.
And Ms. Heim has pointed out to me, apparently on the OneDrive, there's a 2016 email, for example. So, my suggestion is that any document that staff intend to submit as part of a public comment, and many meetings ago I objected to any public comment as part of this quasi-judicial hearing, so I hope that ongoing objection is recognized. But I think we have to have absolute clarity about what's in the record, and if the OneDrive documents are supposed to be part of the record, we all need to see what they are in written form as well. So, perhaps this issue can be deferred until the next meeting. We can all have an agreed-on package.
Sure. That makes sense. That's fine.
And then, as long as we're on the record, could we clarify who is keeping the record, the official record of this proceeding?
In terms of the exhibits?
Yes.
So, the exhibits are delivered to the city's support services staff, who scan and compile them and upload them to the OneDrive link. I have been preparing the exhibit list because they don't understand, they aren't familiar with the documents. So, my role is only to look at a document that is on the OneDrive and identify its name.
So, is, if I can just, I would like to understand, so is, are the documents on the OneDrive then going to be the official record of this proceeding? Or is Ms. Liao keeping a hard copy that's the official record, or what?
The official written record is being kept by the city clerk's office. The OneDrive link is being made available for courtesy with respect to all of the commission members, to ensure that they have copies to review, as well as the parties for review. At this point in time, the record is still open. So, for purposes of clarifying, particularly these comment letters are an excellent example of that, we may still receive those up until the close of the proceeding. So, there's fully opportunity. In fact, my office realized with the staff report and the attachments, I didn't realize, were not on the OneDrive link. We need to do some cleanup. So, this is not, what you see on the OneDrive link is not static at this point in time until we close the record, and it's my full intent to go through it, to make sure that what I've been collecting in written form is consistent with what the city has and has uploaded. I think, given the concerns, we will probably give each party the opportunity to make corrections to that record before we close it.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to dovetail on that point, Ms. Liao, I mean, I've reviewed the list that you've handed me. That's going to be the official Exhibit C1, correct? All the items on the list?
Those are what, those are what we received from the city staff as part of their city report, and so I wanted each party to have an opportunity to review what we had received, what we think, how it should be labeled for administrative purposes, for clarity. So, again, same thing. If anyone has any concerns with respect to administratively or substantively what you're seeing, please let me know, or let us know at a future proceeding, so we can get that clear.
So, we'll address that at a future proceeding?
Yeah. So, if, I wanted to give everyone time to look at it. It's not a quick look, but if anyone has any concerns or objections to, or recommendations for how we renumber things, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay. So, we've basically, thinking that we can adjourn tonight's meeting, but we still need to make some decisions on future date, and we, I understand that the parties have been, that may be available to continue these hearings, April 16th, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That date is no longer available for me. I was under the impression that we were going to be convening on April 30th and May 1st.
No, I never heard those dates.
That was a communication with staff, I thought.
So, so I thought that April 16th was still a valid date as of last night, and then we had floated dates of the 28th, no, 29th, 30th, and 1st. We do not have a quorum on the 29th. We do have barely a quorum on the 30th, and we already have a matter scheduled on the 1st. So, Ms. Liao and I have discussed if there were, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. We decided the 1st would not work, although I think that might be, if this was predicated on, the parties probably needing at least more than one more night to present rebuttal witnesses. But, so we were coming in hoping the 16th and the 30th might work, but that sounds like it might not, the 16th is not.
If it's absolutely necessary, I can do some reshuffling. That wouldn't be my preference, but.
I don't think we have any other dates that have been suggested to us as available from staff or the parties before April 30th, otherwise.
So, are we, just to be clear, are we looking at the 16th, the 29th, and the 30th?
Just the 16th and the 30th. We don't have a quorum on the 29th with the commission.
And again, you know, I understand everybody's schedules and the challenges with a lot of people involved, but I really implore the city and the Development Commission, if there's any way that we can get hearing dates earlier. We've said it before, but this is an issue that's costing $100,000 a month in carrying costs, and it's now been a year since we received an April letter with a vesting determination. So, we've been dealing with this for a year now. If there's any way that we can get an additional hearing date, so that we can get three days in April and wrap this up within the next month, we would be extremely appreciative of that.
Well, it sounds like it's possible for us to get the 16th, and I think it will take some internal work to try to figure out what other days may be available. Can we ask, have we already asked, done surveys to find out who's available, or was the 29th, the 29th, the, or the 30th the only other day available, or that's?
I believe the city polled the April 24th, the first two weeks of April, and I don't know availability of... And so to the extent we'd get to the point of deliberations, we would actually need to end that night because Commissioner Morgan wants to be a part of that deliberation.
And we want him to be part of that deliberation as well.
But if that, if we were able to conclude by April 30th, we hadn't talked to the city about the next available dates, but we'd certainly try to make it happen as soon as possible so that we could convene and make that decision, or the commission could make that decision.
So we're in agreement, the 16th and the 30th and one other day, the best we can, if we can pull that off. Is that correct?
Yes.
We appreciate your adjusting your schedule, Mr. Liao, to be able to pull that off. So I think with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On one point, I think we might need to close the public comment portion of the.
Public comment portion is closed. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for your time in trying to schedule all this. I know it's difficult, and I'm sorry we're having to push on it. It's just that there's a considerable burden on us as well to be here.
I understand, and appropriate. So with that, let's consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.